Good afternoon and welcome to the May 28, 2024 special meeting of the Roseville City Council and our city council, our annual city council budget workshop. I'll call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start with Vice Mayor Brusconi.
Here.
Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Here.
And Mayor Haldishell.
Here.
Thank you.
I will ask Assistant City Manager Dion Louthen to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much, Jen. And I'll ask the city clerk to announce the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the city of Roseville's budget workshop tonight and special meeting. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table or online on the city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to the city council and not to any staff member or members of the public. All speakers are asked to please come to the podium as this meeting is being recorded. Tonight, we do have a special meeting, and public comment will be taken just after the presentations and just prior to the discussion by the city council and questions from city council. With that, Mr. Mayor, we're ready to begin.
Thank you very much. And before we start with our reports and presentations, we'll have an opportunity for public comment. Any, this is a time in which folks will make comment on anything not on the, on the agenda, which is all about the budget. And I see no takers, so I will, will now go into our budget workshop, and I'll ask our city manager, Dominic Casey, to make some opening comments.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of city council, thank you. Tonight, before you, we have a relatively brief meeting, but certainly not a brief process. And I'd be remiss to not just jump right in and thank everyone in this room for the hundreds of hours spent on this document in front of you. Tonight would be a good night for any questions, because I think everyone out here, there's a lot of answers for you. So I think that tonight we'll have a budget overview, a little bit of an introduction, and talk about fiscal overview, where we're at fiscally, not only within, within locally, within the city, but also federally, how things are shaping up and looking, because really, it all does impact our, our budget as well. What happens at the federal level, the state level impacts us at the, at the local levels. You guys are well aware. And then we'll have department, our, some of our larger general fund departments are going to give presentations, police, fire, parks, recreation, libraries, public works, economic development, and then we'll have, we'll have a short closing. And I think it's important to note for the council and for the public that after the fiscal overview and after each of the department presentations, we'll be able to have a council discussion and open for, for public comment as well. And as I mentioned, this, this is quite an extensive process. Did the presentation ever go up?
I'm trying to figure out if that's my phone or...
Okay. I just went live on that one. Sorry, I didn't even look at it. Next slide. Next slide. Okay. As I mentioned, it, it is an extensive process. As we, we spend really, I think as soon as we close one budget, we begin the next budget process. So back in February, you can see that the, we, we came to the city council, shared our, our budget calendar, all the important dates in February. We got together for our annual strategic planning, and, and I think this one was unique because it's the start of our new five-year plan. We finished out our, our final plan. We'll have those, those strategic planning workshop booklets out soon. I know they're done. I've seen them in press, and, and so I, I think that as we ensure many of our goals and initiatives, we were able to re-identify and reprioritize as a city. And so you'll find that this proposed budget aligns with the council's strategic plan and priorities set forth in our new, new five-year plan. And in March, we brought forward the long-term pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities update. And so really, part of our strategy with, with spreading the budget out over, over so many meetings, as you guys know, it's a large, complex document and process. And so it's an effort to really make it consumable, so not only, not only our residents understand it, the council understands it, has an opportunity to give direction and, and ask questions as we move along the process. And so then, in April, we meet with each one of the department heads and their management teams and go over their priorities for the year based on the strategic plan process and what the council's direction was and priorities are. And so that's, that's in early April, and we come back in April as well and do a financial policies update to the council based on direction we've received this, that year, and whatever changes happen, again, at the state, federal level that we need to incorporate into our, our new policies. And also looking at our tax oversight meeting, I think Measure B, as you guys will recall, 2018, our half-cent sales tax measure, we set forward a, an oversight committee that would make sure that we were spending those additional tax dollars. Now, almost, we'll see in the presentation tonight, almost $30 million, that we're spending that to maintain our core services, that we're, that we're actually, we're paying down our unfunded liabilities, we're preserving our, our reserves, but then that we're also providing services, those core services like police, fire, and, and public works, which we heard were, were so important. Looking at our, our schedule of users for regulatory, for our fees, fees are an important part of our business, important part of what we do, and this council has taken, taken an appropriate direction in making sure that, that not only are we, are we doing a regular fee updates and studies, but we're, we're charging an appropriate amount of fees to recover those costs. And that's something that, that I think is, is very important, is we, we use that to fund a large portion of our operation. Brought forward our capital improvement projects, budget update, just this year, I believe it's just shy of $100 million in, in capital projects. Last year, it was, it was greater than that. And as you guys know, some of those, those projects will last year to year. You don't always finish them. Matter of fact, you often don't finish them in, in one year. And so a lot of times when you look at that, that almost $100 million, that's on top of $130 million last year from, so very aggressive capital improvement program and planning and, and, but it's needed. It's needed for, for a growing city. And so we, we shared that back in May, and then also electric and the environment utilities came and shared their, their rate case and, and their budgets and their operational priorities for the year. Then we released the, the big document in front of you today, the proposed budget, a release after the public, and we shared, released it to the city council as well, and, and shared that for, for review in preparation for today, which is the May 28th, our workshop, where we're going to look at a citywide budget presentation. We're going to talk about our, our fiscal position and trends, what we're seeing from the department operating budgets. And then on June 19th, the council will consider the budget for adoption. Take a quick drink of water. Getting dry. As, as robust as the process is, so is the outreach, right? It's really important that, that, that the public is able to participate in this and share their thoughts and their priorities. And so part of our outreach is the budget brief document that really, it kind of shrinks the budget down to what the major functions and priorities are in order to be, be more consumable. We put it on our website, we share it through the e-newsletter, put it on all our social media accounts. We also sent special updates out to the coalition neighborhood associations, Sun City, Roseville, their, their group that meets with the legislative folks, and then the Chamber of Commerce, and obviously all, all of our employees. And so a lot of this is, is done through our social media, but it's also done in meetings and updates and sharing those. And certainly, it can all be found on, on our website. And tonight, when we look at the citywide budget overview, we're going to talk a little bit about each of these, and I won't go into great detail because Dennis and Scott are, are going to cover a lot of this. But as we, as we look at our, our revenues increasing, certainly some of the major projects we're looking at, baseline marketplace, looking at Costco, going, going, going through construction, going and, and the rest of that site balancing out, hopefully with, with more retail, will be, would be a great, great surge in, in retail for the city. And looking, it's something we always do, is looking at our expenditures and, and making sure we're controlling those. This is a pretty conservative year, this year, budget-wise for us, particularly with positions, because we had a lot of uncontrollable cost increases, which we'll talk about, increasing, increasing the budget. But as I said, it, it fully funds all of our priorities, and it fully funds the council's strategic plan and, and all of our core services. There'll be a general budget overview from the general fund, showing that revenues and expenses, showing that, that revenues, while, while slightly down or flattening, the projections as Dennis will share in the five-year plan, we see those, those slightly increasing, again, where our expenditures are, and, and we'll have a detailed view of that. Some of, some of the challenges, you know, while, while it's great to be in Roseville, we certainly do still have challenges, just as, as the rest of the, the region. We have a lot of growth, a lot of fast growth, so keeping up with infrastructure is important, making sure that we have adequate infrastructure and, and particularly roads, right, to deal, deal with the traffic, but also ensuring that as we, as we look at the regulatory environment, dealing with, with the clean, advanced clean fleet is, is a big issue for us, ensuring that we're moving in the right direction, at the right pace, while it's, it's, it's challenging, it's, we're doing it, and, and we certainly have a strategy in place. Also SB 1383, the Clean Organics Bill, and, and, and working through that and, and dealing with, with some of those on the, on the fiscal, on the fiscal piece, not only from it costing more, but operationally being different as, as we move forward. And so certainly some challenges we hear about. One of the, one of the things we looked at a few years ago, it was, we were having a, a tougher time in our recruitment of, of new staff, and, and that's something that, that we really made an effort to focus on organizational culture and being an employer of choice and, and ensuring that we're paying competitive rates and, and really going out and being purposeful about that. And that's something we, we don't see, right? We haven't had a challenge in, in, in recruitments over the, over the last year. And so kind of looking at the staffing, going back up to that slide, or the, the bullets before, I think that's something that's a success, right, that we, we can point to, something that, that a lot of what we do in, in not only the council's strategic plan, but in this budget, is it's a policy document, it's a strategy document, it's really, it's, it's, it's kind of matches along lines with the, the charter, right, as in, in a constitution for us, of how we operate in, in the policy direction in there. And so that was something, when, when we look at, at the challenges, you know, we don't just passively think about them, we actively manage them, and how do we mitigate them, and how do we move forward? And that, that lives in this, this document. And then so then looking at the five-year forecast, we're going to give you some perceptions. One of the things we want to change this year, you'll see, and I don't want to steal your thunder, I apologize if I, if I do, Dennis, is a lot of times we'll show the lines crossing in our five-year forecast, but the reality is that doesn't happen, right? We're never going to bring the council a unbalanced budget. We're always going to bring you a balanced budget, which means we may have to make some reductions, we may have to cut some, some services, some costs. So, so this one will show you that, right? It'll show you as we go out, the, the different models, the, the most optimistic, and then, and then I won't say, you know, the, the least optimistic, I won't say pessimistic, the least optimistic, and then there's one in the middle.
Pragmatic.
Pragmatic, right? Well, that's the middle one. And so as you'll see that, that's a little change from previous years. And then, and then each one, you'll get an operation, you'll get like a department summary in each one of the operations. And then lastly, we'll be looking at the confirmation of the recommendations in the budget tonight. Nothing, don't, shouldn't be any big surprises. These are things we've, we've heard, we've talked about throughout the year and in going into this budget, maintains our service levels. We, we will be addressing new and state federal mandates as we continue to do. I mentioned a couple of those, certainly making sure that we're providing our service levels in the areas that the council prioritized, not only in this strategic plan, but in previous strategic plans. And, and it's important, too, to maintain there was, those reserves and pay down our obligations. One of the things that's, you know, put us in a very fiscally strong position currently are those reserves, the general fund reserves, the pension reserves, that, that over the last five years, really, we, we've put in place and we funded. I can share with you that, that's not necessarily the region's story when you look at, at different cities within, within the state of California, within the region. While some of them could share that, but the majority of them cannot. And so that's something that, that this council should be very proud of, this staff should be very proud of, working forward to, to creating that fiscal stability. And so that's something you'll, you'll hear more of tonight as well. And again, maintaining those Measure B priorities, this is important, it's been important to this council, and going forward, certainly, we, we made a commitment when we passed that half-cent sales tax, that we would continue to focus and prioritize in these areas, and we certainly have, right? And as I mentioned earlier, with the, the, the paying down of CalPERS and paying down the retiree health and the stabilization funds, those allow us to not make permanent cuts for a temporary issue, right? If you have a temporary problem, a temporary revenue drop, such as a short, regular recessionary time, that's what those reserves are for, right, to help us weather that storm. We certainly have created those. And so, so that's something, that was a priority. That was a priority that the community, priorities advisory committee established. And, and all the work we've done after that, leading up to it, we've heard that, heard very similar requests from, from our residents. And so we continue to prioritize that at, at the direction of the council and certainly at the urging of, of the community. Some of the concerns shared with this, and certainly Dennis and Scott will go into greater detail, is, is we do, we do see a slowing of the general fund tax, being largely sales tax, right? And then the two of those, the Bradley Burns, and then also the, the Measure B portion, you know, and, and I say that, it's, it's a flattening. I think they, there was a reduction projected that didn't necessarily come to fruition, and we're starting to see, see a little more of an increase in growth. And so I think that's certainly something that's, that's optimistic. There's always a risk of a recession with where we're at right now, and talking about the federal issue and even down to the state issue, there, there are some concerns with the rate, rate hikes to help control that inflation, what that will do to the market. And so we continue to watch that, and we're mindful of it. And the capital costs are really, really getting out of control. The, the cost of inflation, and, and we've talked about this with transformers, is one example, where a transformer three or four years ago was $5,000, and now they're $25,000, and they take two years to get. We're seeing that a lot. The supply chain disruption is not only, not only driving up costs, but it's, it's making us think and rethink how we procure, where before a year in advance was plenty of time, it's not necessarily anymore. We're having to look at things five years out for large, large purchases and capital costs and, and projects. And so certainly, that's something we're, we're very active about. We just went on a utility, infrastructure advocacy trip to, to DC specifically for this, to look at, for additional funding for some of these large capital projects, which will help ease the, the fee burden in order to pay those. And really, some of those large projects take both, right? They take, they take, they take grants and they take fees, because if you were to try to fund that solely on a fee basis, it'd be, it'd be very challenging. Some of our opportunities, obviously, talked about baseline marketplace, new development, and we're always active. I, I think the one thing that's not on here is also our corridor planning and, and trying to, to help private business invest in some of the, the core areas of, of the city. I think that's a great opportunity for us. Bosch with a $1.5 million investment into the, into the city, we're, we're very excited about the opportunity that that could bring, and also the, the spin-off industry that, that could bring, and having the industry, the industrial land and property set to, to help that explode is, is something that we're certainly focused on. And then the, lastly, the, the new amenities being the soccer complex. Very excited about the addition of the soccer complex, not only from a quality life standpoint, but for the fact that, that we will be able to see, I would say, almost immediately an increase in our TOT as a result of the nights, the, the overnight stays that will be generated from a facility of, of that quality and of, of that magnitude. So that's certainly an opportunity for the city. And as we look at the budget kind of globally, right, it maintains our fiscal responsibility, aligns with the mission and city of our strategic plans. Certainly lives within our, within our means. It, it's conservative, conservative, but, but, but certainly funds our full array of services, and it provides those core services, right? The things we hear routinely from our, our residents in our community, that, that our police, our fire, our trails, our parks, our, our, even our, our traffic, right, and our infrastructure, it's important. And so, so this budget certainly funds all of those core services that, that we talked about, and you'll hear more detail certainly from the departments as we, as we walk through those. And I think that's my last slide?
It is.
It is.
Before we dive into the details, though, I wanted to ask the council if they had any questions of our city manager? All right.
With that, I'll turn it over. Turn it back to you, Mayor.
All right. For our fiscal overview, we'll have our assistant city manager and CFO Dennis Kaufman and Scott Pettengill provide, provide us the detailed budget overview.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Scott will start us off this afternoon and provide information today about the citywide budget, including revenues, expenditures, staffing levels, and the capital improvement program. And then he'll talk about the general fund, revenues and expenditures. And then I will highlight some of the budget initiatives that are helping the city plan for the future, including the general fund forecasts that Dom mentioned. And then I'll wrap up our section with budget highlights about the general government departments, before you hear from each of the department heads about their operating budgets. So I will turn it over to Scott.
Before you turn it over to Scott.
Yes.
As our city manager pointed out, and, and we've seen, it's just not you two, is it?
That's correct.
Want to introduce, you want to have the team stand, or you're going to, you could do that later?
We, we can have the team stand. I would also just like to thank Scott Pettengill, my assistant finance director, Nancy Rothlisberger, our budget manager, and our budget team, and Lisa Gist and her team who helped with the labor cost budgeting. Do you guys all want to stand up? Look at all, look at that enthusiasm. Much, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, Scott, take it away.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members. So as Dennis mentioned, first I'll be providing a citywide budget overview this afternoon. I'll begin with an overview of our citywide revenues, which are estimated to reach $799 million in the proposed budget, representing an increase from the previous year total of $794 million. Our enterprise funds stand out as the city's most significant revenue streams, and these funds, which include electric, environmental utilities, and transit, make up the majority of our revenues, accounting for 55% or approximately 440 of our total citywide revenues. Following is our second-largest revenue source, the general funds, representing about 28% of all of our revenues, and these funds support essential departments such as police, fire, parks, recreation, and libraries. And lastly, the remaining portion of our revenue falls under the other funds category, and this category encompasses resources from various sources such as our special districts, development, and golf fees. And while smaller, these revenues make up about 17% of all citywide revenues totaling approximately $136 million. So now I'll move on to our citywide budgeted expenditures. Our citywide expenditure budget totals $768 million for the upcoming fiscal year, reflecting a decrease from the previous year's total of $784 million. And that decrease is primarily attributed to significant investments in some one-time capital requirements last year, such as the purchase of some electric buses. And despite that decrease, the proportional share of each of the major spending categories included in the pro, the budget remains similar to that of prior years. Salaries, wages, and benefits, followed by material service supplies, continue to make up a majority of our spending plan, and the largest spending category remain salary, wages, and benefits, accounting for 38% of the budget at $292 million. Material service supplies follow, making up 20% or $215 million of the total budget. A significant portion of the proposed budget, about 13% or $100 million, is allocated for capital, non-capital projects. An additionally, 12% or 92 million will be allocated for electric power purchases. And lastly, the remaining 9% of the spending plan categories as other encompasses spending for debt service and transfers to other funds totaling approximately $69 million. So next, I'll be reviewing the staffing level changes that are included in the proposed budget. Our total proposed budget, our, our 25, fiscal year 25 proposed budget includes funding for about 1,388 positions, representing an increase of 20 positions compared to the previous fiscal year. The proposed budget includes 27 new positions, offset by the reduction of nine positions, resulting in a net increase of 18 new ongoing positions. The budget also includes two additional positions related to promotional reclassifications. And this type of reclassification occurs when we upgrade the classification of existing position, but because we have multiple qualified incumbent employees who'd be eligible for that position, we increase staffing levels temporarily, and once the hiring process is complete, we delete the positions previously occupied by the promoted employee. Excluding these two promotional reclassifications, which are more temporary in nature, the city's ongoing position count is only increasing by 18 positions or less than 1.5%. And lastly, the budget also allocates some funding to reclassify two authorized positions. Human resources will be analyzing these two requests and present them to city council for consideration at a later date. So taking a closer look at staffing changes by department, at the bottom of the fourth column in this chart titled Total Net Change, you'll notice the 18 total new ongoing positions that I mentioned previously. And moving to the fifth column highlighted in blue, you'll find the two promotional reclassifications. And the last column in green, we have the two reclassifications that are pending HR view. The position adjustments in development services, economic development, police, parks, recreation, libraries, and public works will be described in detail in their individual presentations this afternoon. Eun electric provided an overview of their position increases in their individual budget presentations, which, which occurred on May 1st. And since finance and IT won't have separate presentations today, I did want to take a moment here to touch upon those two, a, a couple of changes in those two departments. In finance, we're proposing one new position, and this entails converting a limited-term administrative technician role to a regular ongoing position in our procurement services division. And this position was added to help stabilize staffing after implementing our new ERP system, but the work is proven to be more ongoing in nature. Additionally, we're proposing a promotional reclassification for a senior accounts payable position to maintain proper Hispanic control within that division. As I mentioned previously, staff will return to council to delete the position vacated by the employee ultimately selected for this position at a later date. And moving on to IT, we're proposing converting a limited-term database analyst position to a regular one to support enterprise GS, to, to support the enterprise GS program citywide. And GS is the geographic information system that provides maps and map layers to help us communicate location data for city services. And this position specifically provides GS support for the parks, recreation, libraries, and electric departments. And this next slide, we summarize the recommended position increases by city council priority and identify if the position was growth-related, enhances service levels, or if it's required because of a state or federal mandate. Of the 27 new positions that are included in the proposed budget, 10 will support the priority of delivering exceptional city services, four support the priority of investing in well-planned infrastructure and growth, 12 support the priority of ensuring itself and healthy community. And lastly, one position was added to support the priority of remaining fiscally responsible in a changing world. Most of the positions included in the proposed budget are required to maintain services in our growing city, followed by enhancing service levels and ensuring compliance with state and federal mandates. So next, I'll provide a brief overview of our five-year capital improvement program. The proposed budget includes about $90 million in capital project appropriations, with the majority of the projects in public works, Roseville Electric, the Water Utility, and Parks Recreation Libraries. The Public Works Director presented our capital improvement program on May 1st, and some of the notable projects included in that presentation were the utility, infrastructure... some of the notable projects included in that presentation were the utility infrastructure upgrades, tenant improvements, some streets, streetscape enhancements, park developments, roadway surfing, sing, and some public safety initiatives. Staff also incorporated department's long-term capital planning into our five-year capital improvement program, including your budget book, with 432.6 million in capital spending anticipated over the next five years. So the next few slides, I'll dive into our general fund revenues. Overall, our revenue budget is predicated on the primary assumption that tax revenues will continue to grow, just at a slower, more traditional pace that we've seen in the past. And this assumption is based on our analysis of current year trends, as well as forecasts provided by our consultants. The three most significant sources in the general fund are the Bradley Burns sales tax, the Measure B local sales tax, and our property tax. Bradley Burns sales tax is anticipated to grow by approximately 3.8% compared to the forecasted revenues for fiscal year '24. And this growth equates to an estimated 70.4 million that's included in the budget. This forecast is based on our sales tax consultant's most likely projection for next year. Measure B revenue is projected to increase by around 2% compared to fiscal year '24 forecasted revenues, amounting to about 29.2 million. And this projection, like Bradley Burns', is also based on our sales tax consultant's most likely forecast. I did want to take a moment here to mention that Bradley Burns', Measure B, have different sales tax bases, and that's the reason why the forecasted revenues don't necessarily move in the same proportion. Property tax revenue is estimated to grow by approximately 6% or 75 million in the next fiscal year. And here I did want to note that a portion of this revenue growth is returned to the county over the city's, city's annexation tax sharing agreements. On this next pie chart, we provide a breakdown of all general fund revenues, which total 229 million. Bradley Burns sales tax, Measure B sales tax, and property tax revenues make up the majority of our general fund revenues at 77%. And the remaining 23% is made up of licenses and permits, the electric franchise fee, and charges for services, well, some other taxes. So to provide some more context and insights into our revenue forecast for Bradley Burns' sales tax, we, we prepared this pie chart showing fiscal year '24 actuals received by category. Sales tax generated from general retail, including transactions from establishments like the Roseville Galleria, and transportation-related purchases from places like the Roseville Auto Mall and gas stations, continue to account for a significant portion of our local business revenues, making up about 68%. We did want to note this, as it does underscore the importance of consumer spending and transportation-related activities and contributing to our overall sales tax revenues for the city. The remaining revenues derived from various sources, including food products, business-to-business transactions, as well as construction activity. On this next graph, we examine the trends of the city's notable sales tax generation areas from quarter one of 2021 through quarter four of 2023. Creekside Mall and the Fountains, depicted by the bottom two lines in green and yellow respectively, has shown minimal fluctuations or maintaining relatively flat revenue over this period of time. Moving on to the Galleria, represented by the purple line, we observe a consistent revenue levels with seasonal spikes during the holiday quarters. At the top of the graph, we have the Roseville Auto Mall, showing a slight decline with revenues of just over 3 million. While quarter two exhibits a seasonal spikes, the spike in 2023, you'll notice, is less significant than the previous two years. And we did want to note here that quarter one of 2021 was the first time that the Auto Mall crossed that $3 million threshold, and prior to that, the revenue ranged around 2.5 million. We closely monitor these trends and other sectors in our local economy throughout the year in collaboration with our sales tax consultant, and this ensures that we're comprehensively understanding our revenue landscape, and it helps us make informed decisions to support the city's health. Now I'll turn to a multi-comparison of our sales tax revenues, including the, the collection of Measure B, which you'll see starting in fiscal year '19. As mentioned, the proposed budget includes an estimate of 70.4 million in Bradley Burns' revenues and 29.2 million in Measure B revenue, or approximately 100 million overall. And this chart illustrates the trajectory of sales tax revenue over several years and shows how following the pandemic, we observed a slowdown in sales tax growth. However, we anticipate a growth rate in the coming years, just in the more traditional range of that 2% to 3%. Shifting my focus to property tax, this next slide provides a 10-year history of our city's property tax revenues. The proposed budget includes an estimate of about 75 million. As this graph depicts, depicts, property tax revenue has consistently grown over the past decade, and this growth can be attributed to the city's overall expansion and increasing property values. Looking ahead over the coming year, we'll continue to focus on monitoring the housing market, activity, and property value trends and its impact on our budget. So I'll conclude with an overview of our general fund expenditures included in the proposed budget. And on this next slide, it provides a summary of the general fund operating expenditures by department, providing some insights on how our budget is allocated. Our total general fund operating expenditure budget totals about 229 million. A significant portion of the budget, approximately half, is allocated towards public safety services, and that underscores the budget alignment with your city council public safety goals. While within public safety, the police department accounts for about 28% of the budget, followed by the fire department, which receives 22% of the allocated funds. And additionally, the Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Department receives 17% of the general fund. And the remaining portion of the budget is dedicated to general government departments, which will be further elaborated on by Dennis later in his presentation, along with the Development Services and Public Works Departments. And lastly, that other category encompasses items such as transfers to other funds and the CalPERS additional discretionary payment, which Dennis will also cover later on in his presentation. So that concludes my portion of the presentation. I'll hand it back over to Dennis.
Thanks, Scott. That is a lot of information about the citywide and the general fund budget. You know, when we look at the general fund budget, spending by department is one important perspective, but there's other ways that we look at the budget also. One other perspective is the nature of the expenditures. Scott mentioned earlier that the citywide expense budget is made up of about one-third labor costs, but when you look at the general fund, it's actually more like two-thirds labor costs, because within the general fund departments, it's really city employees that are out there directly serving the constituents, residents, and businesses within Roseville. Another perspective to look at with the general fund expenditures is how much is truly discretionary spending of the city's major tax revenues. Some of our general fund expenditures are financed by fee revenue, which is collected for providing that specific service. Other revenue sources are dedicated to specific source, services, and are not discretionary. These revenues total about $45 million for next year and consist primarily of charges for services, as are fees, the electric franchise fee, and licenses and permits. In the general fund, more than half of the charges for services revenue is collected by the Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Department and the Development Services Department. The electric franchise fee funds police, fire, and parks, recreation, and libraries according to the city charter, and most of the license and permit revenues are collected by police, fire, and development services departments. And then some general fund expenditures are contractual obligations or are based on council policy decisions, and we also consider those nondiscretionary, including the tax-sharing annexation payments to the county and things like retiree health benefit payments. So we produced this graphic to kind of show the general fund operating budget like a filter, starting at the total $229 million of operating revenue and operating expenses, and then subtracting those expenses that have revenue offsets that total $45 million, leaving 184 million available for spending. Then we subtract out those nondiscretionary spending categories that are total 28 million, and that brings you to 156 million of discretionary spending that's available with tax revenues. More than half of that amount, about 58%, or $91 million, is proposed to be spent on police and fire departments in the proposed budget, leaving the remaining $65 million available from taxes to be allocated to everything else in the general fund. That's the Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Department, the Streets Division within Public Works, floodplain management, code enforcement, economic development, and the general government departments. So different ways to look at general fund expenditures. Developing the general fund budget involves estimating revenues and expenditures for the next fiscal year, but the process also has us focusing on the future and how we can plan using the city's financial policies as a guide. The city's budget development policy addresses how we use one-time funding for one-time uses, like in the case of year-end budget surplus. The policies direct staff to maintain our general fund reserves to weather economic downturns or other financial impacts. The policies also reflect council's goal to address the city's pension liability using the Pension Trust Fund and additional discretionary payments to CalPERS. And the policies call for staff to prepare a general fund forecast to help us plan for the future. The proposed budget for fiscal year 2025 includes one-time appropriations to implement a spending plan for last year's general fund year-end surplus from fiscal year '23. The plan includes capital projects, many of which you could see listed here on the slide, including Crimson Ridge Park, which council already approved, adventure club facility improvements, which staff will be recommending at the next council meeting on June 5th, public safety technology projects, parking garage improvements, and the corridor streetscape landscaping project that was elevated as a priority at the council's strategic planning workshop. The spending plan also includes a one-time assessment payment for the city's general liability program, which I'll touch on a little bit later, and transfers to the Strategic Improvement Fund, the Pension Reserve Trust Fund, and the Litigation Reserve Fund. And the spending plan includes a few one-time augmentations for Fire, Fire Academy for new staff, personnel record digitization, and a citywide succession planning program. After considering, considering the growing costs of city operations and the proposed augmentations, the proposed budget includes a transfer of $2.7 million of general fund resources into the stabilization reserve to achieve this council's policy target of 15% of general fund operating expenditures. And the budget transfers $1.8 million into the general fund emergency reserve to maintain the council policy target of 10% of general fund operating expenditures. Just as a reminder, the purpose of the stabilization reserve is to address revenue shortfalls caused by future economic downturns, and the emergency reserve is to address expenditures that might be necessary during an emergency. With the reserves up to the policy targets, then staff recommends taking additional steps to address pension liabilities with CalPERS. The city council established a strategy to address pension liabilities after our general fund reserve targets are met under its strategic plan goal to remain fiscally responsible. Council approved a pension funding policy that includes funding a Section 115 Pension Trust Fund. Section 115 is an Internal Revenue Source Code section that allows governments to establish tax-exempt trusts for a governmental purpose. In this case, a pension trust can be set, set up to set aside resources to meet future pension contributions or liabilities. The resources are irrevocably restricted for pension obligations. The trust can be used as a rate stabilization fund to ease budgetary pressures that result from unanticipated spikes in required employer contribution rates from CalPERS. The proposed budget includes transferring another $2.9 million into the Pension Trust Fund, again funded by surplus from fiscal year '23, bringing the total transfers to the new trust to $20 million. This Pension Reserve Trust will be available for the city to use as pension contributions continue to rise over the next five years, if available revenues don't keep up with necessary expenditure growth. The proposed budget also includes $1.8 million for the city's fourth additional discretionary payment to CalPERS. For context, I pulled in some of the more recent data from the CalPERS actuarial evaluations. The city's overall funded status ratio is about 64%, when the ideal ratio is somewhere between 80 and 95%. Please remember that the funded ratio dropped last year due to the negative 7.5% investment return that CalPERS experienced in fiscal year 2022. The city's total unfunded liability is $481 million based on that most recent actuarial evaluation. That's the portion of the total liability that's currently not funded. The estimated citywide cost for next fiscal year for required contributions to CalPERS is about $61 million, and of that amount, 36 million will come from the general fund. Among the benefits of making one of these additional discretionary payments includes paying down the unfunded liability, increasing that funded status of the plan, and reducing future pension costs to build capacity in the budget to maintain city service levels in the future. The $1.8 million ADP included in the proposed budget will pay off a slice of that liability that will reduce the general fund pension costs by a little more than 123, a little more than $120,000 per year for the next 23 years. Addressing the city's pension liability and maintaining reserves are ways that this budget prepares us for the future. Another tool that we use to prepare for the future is the general fund forecast. We prepare the forecast for several reasons. It helps staff make prudent financial recommendations. It puts council's decisions into context, and it's a valuable exercise for staff to identify and understand the factors or drivers that affect the city's revenues and expenses. This exercise, as we repeat it regularly, improves our ability to budget more accurately. We included this graph in the budget in brief and in the general fund overview section of the budget book as a snapshot of three potential revenue scenarios compared to expenditure growth at the most likely revenue scenario. The value of performing this process every year is to identify when forecasted expenditures may catch up with projected revenues well in advance and allow us to take necessary actions as the future becomes clearer. Since the future is filled with uncertainty, this graph is too simple to explain, so I want to go through the process with you and explain the potential outcomes in the future. So I'd like to talk about some of the assumptions. When we put together the forecast, we include things that are known. We assume that we will continue to increase our user fees to maintain appropriate cost recovery. We assume the labor costs based on our current memorandums of understanding our contracts with the labor groups. We assume that inflation will be slowing over the forecast period. That seems to be the consensus among economists at this point in time. We include in the forecast contributions based on the actuarial reports for pensions and other post-employment benefits or the retiree health payments. And we assume increases into our capital improvement program rehabilitation based on the council-adopted policy. And we include what is known about federal and state mandates. What we don't include, and it's important that we talk about what's not included in our forecast, in particular, new revenue sources that could include things like new retail or new development, in particular, things like the baseline marketplace and the Costco. We also don't include labor market adjustments in our labor contracts that could be higher than we would imagine at this point in time. We don't know what the labor markets will do in the future. We also are not assuming a period of elevated inflation. We're assuming inflation will slow, and we are unable to include new federal and state regulations. So when we prepare the five-year forecast, we develop different future growth rates of our existing general fund revenues. Since the future is uncertain, we build a base scenario, which is the middle line, and a more optimistic and a less optimistic scenario. The three scenarios start with the fiscal year '25 revenue of about $229 million and grow to between 258 and 287 million. So the difference in that final year, 2030, between the more favorable and the less favorable outlook is about $29 million. This next graph represents the general fund operating expenditure forecast, which starts at $229 million and grows to just over $300 million over the next six years. The assumptions for expenditure growth continue to include adding eight to 10 new positions each year, fully funded by the general fund, to maintain city service levels while keeping up with growth in the city. The assumptions also include modest compensation increases to maintain competitive salaries and benefits, plus projected pension costs and medical premium increases. This next graph plots the three revenue scenarios on top of the expenditure forecast, and you can see the revenue line start just above the bar on the far left, but then depending on the scenario, fall below the top of the expenditure bar, starting in fiscal year '26, '27, or '28, depending on the scenario. The years when the expenditure bar catches The years when the expenditure bar catches up to a revenue scenario has advanced by one year since we presented the forecast last year as a result of slowing revenue growth and expedited expenditure growth. It's important to point out that unless there is a significant recession, the city expects to be able to balance its budget by slowly slowing expenditure growth to match revenue growth and potentially using the Pension Reserve Trust to fund the pension cost increases until they are expected to peak in 2030. It's also critical to mention that the revenue scenarios presented do not include new revenues expected from future development, including the baseline marketplace retail center, which is a significant funding source for the development in West Roseville. Where staff are assuming adding positions each year in this forecast, there could be years with slower revenue growth where fewer positions are added, for example. The city also has the reserves I mentioned earlier to be prepared for an economic downturn. And then we provide an example recession forecast, and the purpose of this forecast is to recognize the importance of long-term financial planning. The dotted red line reflects an example recession, starting in fiscal year 2027 and having lasting impact for several years. Staff are not predicting when the next recession may occur, but we believe it's important to keep this risk in mind. Economists are mixed on whether or not a recession is coming anytime soon, but hopefully any downturn, when it does eventually come, will be mild. Maintaining the general fund reserves will be a critical tool for the city to navigate the first couple of years of any future recession. As this graph depicts, a recession that's half as deep and half as long as the Great Recession would have a significant effect on our revenues and require reduction in services in conjunction with strategic uses of reserves. The stabilization reserve may not eliminate the need to reduce services, but it will also give the city time to adjust prudently. Again, I want to reiterate that this recession forecast is just an example and that our forecast is based on many, many assumptions about uncertain future conditions. But the takeaway from all of this is that while Measure B and Measure C and the rest of the general fund tax revenue portfolio is allowing the city to maintain services and Roseville's quality of life, the city needs to continue to be vigilant in preparing for the future by maintaining reserves, updating fees for appropriate cost recovery, building future capacity in the budget with tools like the additional payments to CalPERS and the Pension Trust, as well as continuing to look for ways to be more efficient and to generate new revenues. All right. Before we hear from some of the larger city departments about their proposed budgets, I will highlight some of the changes in the general government department proposed budgets. Starting with the city council budget, expenditures are increasing primarily for the membership fees for the local agency formation commission, otherwise known as LAFCO. The council budget also includes fees paid to the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, or SAOCOG, the League of California Cities, and the National League of Cities. The city manager's budget, there are no augmentations to highlight. The increases are primarily related to increases in a variety of citywide charges, with the greatest being charges for general liability insurance and costs related to general liability claims, and you'll hear me touch on that again in a minute, and CalPERS contribution increases, which affect all of these departments. In the city clerk's department, again, no augmentations except for funding the elections that are coming up in November. We added $180,000 to the clerk's budget to pay for those costs. In the city attorney's budget, no augmentations except for that $100,000 additional transfer to increase the litigation reserve. From its current $250,000 balance, we're increasing it to $350,000 to address the increasing cost of attorney's fees if the city had to use that litigation reserve. Otherwise, the rest of the city attorney's increases are related to increases in citywide charges. In the finance department, the most significant change is the way we budget for bank fees and armored car costs. We're changing it to account for them as expenses instead of netting them against interest revenue, which is what the city did in the past. The rest of the increases are primarily those citywide charges. The HR department, the largest increase you see on here, it has to do with those citywide costs that I'm talking about. Within risk management, the HR department manages the workers' compensation and the general liability programs for the city. Like cities all over California and employers and businesses throughout California, the city continues to experience rising insurance premiums and claims costs within our general liability program. And this year, we were also budgeting to pay an additional assessment to our Risk Management Joint Powers Authority. This is the risk pool that we are a member of, that we use for excess coverage for any large claims that the city may face. We have to make an additional payment to them of $1.8 million. And so that's the significant increase in the HR budget. The HR budget also includes funding to continue work on digitizing all of the city's personnel records and hiring consultants to assist in creating a citywide succession planning program. Within the IT department, the proposed IT budget consolidates some software licensing from other departments into IT, including the Maximo Enterprise Asset Management Licensing, shifting from the environmental utilities and electric budgets to IT. And the IT budget provides funding to support about 58 positions, including funding for the database analyst that Scott mentioned earlier, and the addition of a limited-term business systems analyst to support multiple citywide applications, including the customer relationship management software and the website software. And then finally, public affairs and communications. Again, no augmentations here, but they're affected by the same increases in citywide charges, and they have a realignment of how staff are being charged and how they're charged out to other departments, which also increased their reimbursements from other departments this year. With that, that concludes the highlights for the general government department budgets, and we are available to answer any questions at this point before you hear from the other department directors about their proposed budgets. Thank you.
Counsel, questions?
I have two questions. Back when you were talking about the county property tax, so $75.1 million, you said a portion of it goes back because we have to pay the county fees. Is it a portion of the $75.1, or is that the result after we made the payment?
It is a portion of the $75.1.
All right. And then, it would have been maybe helpful just to see what that amount was when it was all done, but not a big deal right now, because I know it's not a huge amount. The second question I had was, we've been, I've been on council for quite a while, we've been doing these projections for quite a while, and it's great. I was just curious, have we looked back many years and see which path we've actually taken and how we've done? Do you have like a summary of what it's been like looking backwards?
I'm glad you asked that question. We've actually just started doing that. We haven't historically done that. We've just started, within the last week or so, started doing that. So more info to come. Yeah, we've just started that exercise, thinking that that would be...
It'd be really interesting to see which path we've taken and how we've done.
It would be. And to answer your first question, the budget for next fiscal year for those payments back to the county is $12.9 million.
Out of the $75.1?
Correct.
Vice Mayor Bernice Cuddy?
Any questions?
Councilwoman Rukucci?
No, no, thank you.
Reverend Mendoza?
Thank you, Mayor.
You know, so Scott, I wanted to drill in on something you mentioned in the expenditures, and you focused in on electric buses. Now, were those grant-funded? And I guess the general question is, even if the revenue is non-tax revenue, non-fee revenue, if it's grant-funding, we get from the outside, that ends up in the expenditure column?
Yeah, that's accurate. Those were grant-funded, and so our revenues came down as well in addition to our expenditures.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. And then I noticed, you know, everyone, this is the budget season. I was reading the LA Times, and one of the ways they're fixing their budget is by not filling positions. If you don't fill positions, the question is, are budgets put, are positions, even if they're not being filled, put into the budget? And is there some vacancy factor that we include in there?
We do. We budget within the general fund and a few of our other funds a vacancy factor because we acknowledge that throughout the year, we will have turnover in some positions, and that will generate savings. So we do budget a 4% vacancy factor.
Okay, okay. I'll open it up for public comment. Everybody likes everybody else's budget? Okay, I'll close public comment, inquire if the council has any additional questions or comments, and if not, we'll move on to our department overviews, starting with Chief Bergstrom and his presentation.
I've nearly decided.
Let me mix that. All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. I'm Trey Bergstrom, your Chief of Police, and with me is Mark Pinedo, who's our Police Department Budget Analyst, and we're here to present to you the proposed Police Department Budget for the coming year. So you can see here how our police department is broken up. We're broken up into four divisions that are the operations of the police department. The first one is our patrol division, the largest part of the police department. This is where all the patrol officers reside and where the kind of outward-facing piece of the police department is, followed up by our investigative services division, where all of our detectives and special assignment units work. Community services, which makes up our traffic division, social services, animal control, our school resource officers, they all fund your community services. And then lastly, is professional services. This is where our professional staff resides in our budget through communications and records. And so through the four divisions, we actually have nine different areas of our budget that meet each of those divisions' needs. So if we look at the giant pie chart that is the police department, the police department is a people business, and so nearly all of our pie chart there, our costs and our expenses are related to the hiring of people. We'll be heading into this year with a $63.8 million budget request. That's up from our current year, which is at $54.8 million, which is a 7% increase. One of the things to note, as was mentioned earlier, the police department makes up 28% of our city's general fund. Even with this increase, we're still going to make up 28% of the city's general fund. The bulk of our budget is in patrol, as I just mentioned before. This is where the majority of our employees and our staff work. This is our patrol officers that work all of our shifts to go out and handle calls for service, and this is where the bulk of our people are at, and thus the bulk of our expenses. The next larger, I'm not going to go through every single one of those little pieces of the pie chart, but the next one you see up there that's the largest is police administration. That's not because we're a top-heavy organization with a bunch of folks running around in my office. This is because this is where all of our internal service funds reside. So everything that we need to keep the lights on at the police department, from building maintenance to our IT internal service fund, it accounts for $4.3 million that all resides inside of our administrative budget. So let's talk about new things. This is my favorite part of the budget, new stuff. And so we'll talk about positions here to begin. And so the first one is a police officer position within our social services unit. We currently have 152 sworn police officers, and with this budget, we would add two to the police department. This job in SSU, SSU is where homeless outreach, our mental health outreach workers are at, and this is actually a job that was entirely developed by staff at the police department. So over the last year, officers actually working on our graveyard shift began kind of a concerted effort in contacting homeless veterans in our city. It became so successful that we started moving them into working on overtime with our social services unit that deals with homeless, and then that grew even further with a budget request to make this a permanent position within SSU. And so this would add a third problem-oriented policing officer to SSU with a focus on veteran homelessness. The next officer on there is within our threat assessment unit. So we started our threat assessment unit about five years ago. This detective's assignment, we call it a unit, but it's really one person, a detective of one in this unit, and they're assigned with all of our criminal threats cases in the city, as well as mental health threats in our city, as well as managing individuals that we find to be concerning with regards to violence in our city. And all of that goes through our threat assessment unit. They also handle all of our infrastructure assessments in the city, both city property and other areas, as far as what the threat issue could be towards that. For example, they've done City Hall. I think every one of yous received training from our threat assessment unit. And then this year, I'm sure you're all well-versed in the state giving us new things to do and not giving us money to do it. They have recently taken the Department of Justice, who normally deals with people who are not allowed to have firearms. For instance, if someone's convicted of domestic violence, they're not allowed to have firearms. That is also something that the state used to handle. Now that is being pushed to the local government, and for us, the place that's going to go is into our threat assessment unit. And the final piece of the need for this is, as I mentioned, this is a one-person unit, and the people they go out and contact every day are not generally always the most stable people, and so they're always having to pull from another unit for another officer for safety purposes. This would allow them to have a partner and pair up. Our third position is a senior police records clerk in our records unit. This one will be specifically set up to handle Public Records Act requests. We've had 162% increase in PRAs over the last year. A lot of that is related to our body cameras and our in-car cameras that just started and just general police PRA requests. Obviously, 162% is a lot, and so we're looking to add a position. PRAs are a very in-depth knowledge base that's needed, and that's why we're going with a senior police records clerk versus a new position. And then the next three positions that are on there are really just adding and moving some money around within the police budget. So the first three are all new jobs, the second three are kind of moving some things around. We have a marketing technician that's partly funded by a grant. She works in our public affairs unit and is currently a 1,000-hour employee. We use her a lot, and so we're looking to move her up to 1,500-hour position. And then the last two are dispatchers, and these are for two part-time dispatch positions. So last year, we had a couple of open positions in dispatch, and we had the need to be a little more flexible in how we have dispatcher-staffed and a couple that wanted to be part-time. And so we were able to use some of that leftover money from the open positions to fund part-time dispatch positions. It became very successful. We had a dispatcher that we otherwise would have lost had she not been able to go part-time, and we're looking to make that a permanent part of our budget this year because the open money we had last year from open positions, thankfully, is not there because those positions have filled, but we got to figure out a way to fund it. So this will allow for us to establish two 1,500-hour part-time dispatcher positions. As far as equipment and things, the first, I think there's eight things on the top of that list. Those are all just general equipment additions into the police department, the kind of the cost of doing business. Those, actually, top seven ones, those account for $67,399 worth of stuff that's either new equipment or replacing old equipment. The last one that's on there, the TASER 10 annual cost, this is our contract with Axon, who provides our tasers. That's actually close to $150,000 a year contract. This contract came into our budget last year, but we use the supplemental law enforcement fund to pay for it, and this year, we just need to move it over into our regular budget. The next things on there are training. Our police department has always taken pride in our training programs, providing training to all of our staff and officers. These are some additions to it. The top two are actually programs that we already fund. The first one is the California Tactical Officers Association Conference that our SWAT team goes to, and the second one is the Women Leaders in Law Enforcement Training Symposium. These are two classes and conferences that we already send people to, but we don't have enough funding to send enough people that we want to send to them. And so what we end up doing each year is stealing money from other parts of our budget to figure out a way to get more people to these conferences. This year, we're trying to fix that by allocating the correct amount of money to send people. For example, with the Cato Conference for our SWAT team, we have 25 members of our SWAT team, and each year, we can only afford to send two to go to the conference, which is a very small portion of the team. This will allow us to send half of the team each year. And with the Willie Conference, the Women Leaders in Law Enforcement Training, we send on average eight to 10 to 12 people to this conference every year through our police department, and our past funding would allow us to send five or six or seven. And so this will allow us to get the number of people we try to get to each year. Both of those two training requests are for $12,000 each to go along with our existing budget. And then the last one is related to our Real-Time Crime Center. You're all very familiar with our Real-Time Crime Center. As that's grown over the last couple of years, we don't have a training budget for real-time crime, and now there's conferences starting to pop up around the country where we can send our Real-Time Crime Center, real-time, say that fast, five times, Real-Time Crime Center staff off to these conferences to learn more about what they're doing. And so this establishes a $7,000 training budget for real-time crime to go to those conferences. So if you look at everything that's on that slide, that amounts to $243,000 in increases, but keep in mind, 60% of that is that one... But keep in mind, 60% of that is that one contract with TASER. And with that, you can see that our budget requests for the coming year are pretty straightforward. We have accomplished multiple projects over the past few budget cycles, including adding necessary staffing, upgrading or providing new equipment, like our in-car camera system that recently went live in the last month, and providing excellent training, all to keep our service abilities on par with the needs of our city and in line with your council goal of maintaining a safe and healthy community. This year's budget request looks to continue that same path into the coming year, and we're happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman Rukucci?
Hello. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bernice Coney?
Two questions. The Real-Time Crime Center, so, because the only thing that was in there was the training, you're staffed up. Can you just talk quickly? You had one person last year, and budget was to add another person last year, and you're good to go there.
Yes, we've added that second person this year. In fact, she's in the middle of all of her training right now. Probably next year, we'll start looking at maybe a third one, but we have to figure out how the second one plays into how we want to schedule Real-Time Crimes operations right now. So, the second one is staffed, and we're working in there to see how it's going to play out.
Okay. And then, for this fall, are you pursuing any grants for any retail theft opportunities like you did last year?
So, we still have that grant. And so, that grant we received last year through the state, I think it was $600,000, runs through this year. Are we doing?
Three years.
It's a three-year grant, so we still have the same one.
Okay, so you've got money left over to do another Operation Grinch?
You'll be seeing Grinch again, yes.
Okay, good.
And it might not even be Christmas time when you see it, so.
Okay, I can hardly wait. Thank you.
You're not saying, but, you know.
Some surprises.
Councilman Albert?
I appreciate you guys working to stay within budget and be careful in how we spend. Next year, I really hope you'll add some more traffic officers to this budget and push your council a little bit. I think that would be a real asset to our city, but appreciate what you're doing behind the scenes. We really do need to beef those areas up, so.
So, what you'll actually see next year, and next year going over probably two to three years, is we will look at, we'll start, as you know, we added B-7, four-ish years ago. You're going to start seeing our planning for B-8. That will include additional Patrol Officers. It will include additional Traffic Officers. And that's going to start, like, this fall. We're going to, we're already kind of starting the framework for it. We'll start the budget planning for it later this year, and then, we've got to figure out, like, what that's going to look like because it's not going to be cheap. So, how's that playing in the next couple of years?
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Right. Vice Mayor Bernice Coney anticipated my question, so I'll open it up for public comment. Close public comment unless there's any other thoughts on the council. We'll move on to the next presentation. Thank you, Chief.
All right, thanks, sir.
I'm Rick Partee. I'm your Fire Chief. And with me, I have Assistant Fire Chief Ryan Harrigan, who's actually over my administrative part of the department and oversees the budget and those who work within the budget. So, he'll be giving you the meat of the presentation, but I want to take a minute to thank Dennis and Scott and their staff for all the work that they do, working with fire and understanding what we do and why we do what we do. And they don't say no as fast as Deion and Dom do, so. Pretty well for me. Anyway, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Ryan Harrigan, Assistant Fire Chief with the Fire Department. And with that, I'll go to the next slide, please. So, our breakout of divisions also have four divisions that oversee the Fire Department. Fire Administration provides the overall support, strategic direction for the department. That's where the Fire Chief and myself work, along with our Management Analyst and some other staff positions. Fire and Life Safety is our Prevention Department. They do business inspections, both for new construction and tenant improvements. They also run our COUPA program, which is a hazardous materials regulatory piece that ties into the EPA. So, they really make sure that the community's safe, the buildings are safe for citizens to enter and for the Fire Departments to enter when we need to. Fire Operations is the bulk of our staffing with 111 personnel. That is the men and women who staff the fire engines and fire trucks in the stations. And then, finally, Support Services, which is essentially our Logistics Department that provides, you know, the upkeep of the stations, the equipment, and make sure that we have the tools and equipment we need to function. Next slide, please. Okay, so, the overview of our budget, as I mentioned, 111 of our 130 personnel are in operations. That makes up the bulk of the budget, 81%, followed by Fire Support Services, which is staffed relatively lightly, but that's where most of our material service supplies and contracts reside in Fire Support Services. Under Fire and Life Safety, 4%, Fire Administration, 4%, and then, Training and Emergency Preparedness is 1% of the budget. Total operating budget proposed for fiscal year '25 is $49.8 million. That's about a roughly 10% increase from last year, which was a little over $45 million. And as was previously mentioned, 22% of general fund expense. Next slide, please. Okay, our budget highlights for this year, no additional positions. With the current fiscal year '24, we added nine positions and brought Engine 8 into service in December of 2023. They're currently housed at Station 9, running two companies out of that station, but a much-needed investment. We're seeing good results from that additional engine up in the north part of town. So, really, fiscal '25 is about strategic investments and supporting Station 8, which is well underway. Station 8 broke ground, what, late summer, early fall last year. That slide there, that photo in the slides, maybe 30 days ago, but stations all dried in and drywall's in, paint's going in. So, we're targeting September completion date with a move in. Our occupancy roughly in October is what we're shooting for. When Station 8 opens, we will move Engine 8 to Station 8, and then, also move Truck 7 a little further west, and it will become Truck 8. So, our strategic investments largely have to do with Apparatus was the big cost for us. Two replacement fire engines, one replacement ladder truck on the plan for fiscal year '25. With lead times for Apparatus, while those are on the plan for next fiscal year, we don't expect to take delivery for them for almost four years, so.
Right, how many years?
Four years.
Okay.
Yeah, four years from time of purchase to delivery is the anticipated timeline. So, that'll put that Apparatus as being replaced right around 20 years to 22 years, roughly, so extending the service life of those a few years until we can get new stuff purchased and delivered. Facilities, most of our material service supplies add this year had to do with Station 8 operating costs, where we added the staff last year. The station will open next fiscal year, so the operating costs have to do with both personnel and facilities, so just the upkeep of the station, the utilities to support the station, all the tools and equipment that go to support the nine additional employees, actually, 10 that we added last year. So, their first-year costs were covered this current fiscal year, but as we go through the budget, there is some support costs there, so that's a big piece of that. Station 3 Long-Term Planning, so Station 3 is our Sunrise Kirby Fire Station in the neighborhood of Sunrise and Kirby. That is our oldest fire station currently in operation, built in 1965, remodeled in the 80s. And what we're seeing now is as that district does not necessarily grow, the population increases, the population ages, and the call volume continues to increase in that area. So, we got to a point where we need to really take a hard look at evaluating what the long-term outlook for that building is. So, we're working with Public Works, the Facilities Division, to come up with a plan, at which point, we can build our long-term forecast off of that. Other equipment up for replacement, our VHF portable radios are going to be replaced next fiscal year pending approval. And a big one for us is the Fire and EMS Records Management System. This is our report-writing software. Currently, we have it under two different softwares, one of which is very old. This will bring them both under one roof and help with efficiencies for our staff. We continue to look for grant opportunities. We just completed this year our $500,000 Training Center upgrade that was just funded entirely by CalOES. We just completed that. That's the Roseville Railcar Derailment Prop, so we're happy to have that done. And next slide, please. Was it? Any questions?
I know that was quick. And just like what Troy mentioned, you know, looking into the future, where are we going to be at and what should we be looking at? And building out west, building up west and north is an area that's of concern for fire as far as distance and driving and response time. So, we'll have that in the future, come back to council to talk about how do we maybe increase staff for dealing with the west and dealing with the north.
Great. Council questions?
I had one. You're mentioning on Station 3, long-term planning. Are you thinking of, like, maybe replacing that building and building something on that site or another site, or what kind of thoughts?
Yes.
Yes, of both. Maybe there, maybe not there?
No, truly, the building is twofold. More personnel probably need to be running out of Station 3 to absorb and deal with the number of calls that we get there. So, build and increase the staffing, we'd have to probably build out on the building. We've had some renovations done in the building already that we had to put a halt to because of certain, the age of the building and the ability to make holes in places that have, may have asbestos and some other areas in it that we probably shouldn't be cutting holes into. But yes, that would be one of the plans. We'll take the funding that was going to be for remodel this year, come up with a long-term plan for possibly building a, you know, taking that station down, building another station there in that location.
Thank you.
Pauline crawled in my head and took my question. So, thank you for that update.
She did the same thing, but to build on that, does the Station 3, you talked about, I think you said the area, maybe the calls volume is increasing even though it's not, it's a maybe infill area or not, you know, not new growth that's happening. But does anything, does that have to do with any mutual aid calls being right there on the border? Does that have an impact in the service out of that station?
Well, if you remember back a few years ago, we had a report, a study done on fire. And Station 3 happens to be one of our busiest fire stations, and it's the infill that's already there as aging population goes, and what we need to do there to increase in medical calls in dealing with the population that is there. That's what it really is.
Okay. Kind of related, but once Station 8 is up and going, and I say your response time is nine minutes, a little over nine minutes, will that decrease citywide or in that area? What kind of effect will that have, having a new station come on?
You know, so Engine 8's already in service, and so, that's helping.
Not running out of?
It's not running out of Station 8. So, what that will do will decrease the number of times that Engine 5 and Engine 9 happen to run into that area and open up areas for them to be able to run to. So, it should decrease some response times in the areas where 9 and 5 normally are, and so that they're in service and available to take their own calls. That's what we're really looking for out of Station 8. And then, Station 8 deals within its own area.
Okay. I think just two more questions. Can you talk a little bit about, because I think this builds into the budget around the difference between our firefighters and their qualifications, what they have versus other cities, and why the costs are potentially higher?
Well, I mean, I can take that. I was going to give it to Ryan, but I'll just jump on, and he can jump in if he wants to. You know, having paramedics on every unit is a plus for any city to be able to have the ability to have advanced life support on scene as soon as a fire unit gets there, not waiting for advanced life support to get there. There's a city next to us here where they only do basic life support, and they have to wait for AMR to provide that advanced life support. So, that alone right there, because one of the unfunded mandates that Ryan didn't bring up here is that our LIMSA or our SSV has instituted that we all have to have a certification that we didn't have to have before, which was an ACLS, is a term for advanced life support certification. So, that's going to be an unfunded mandate that we're having to bring onboard for us also, that other agencies do not have. So, with that being said, I think the paramedic piece, being that there's a paramedic on every unit, is something that other cities do not do.
I think that really underscores the quality of life here that we have. And then, just last question, I know I'm jumping ahead as we talked about Station 3, but is there another station that's a close second that you're looking at in future budgets for us to be paying attention to remodeling, moving?
Just as Troy mentioned and as Councilman Albert alluded to, as far as PD adding on more staff, fire should be adding on more staff in the coming years, and that would be like District 10, which is the Sierra Vista Plan outside, south and west. And then, maybe even north, going up towards Sunset with District 11, I'll call it, because we don't even have a District 11 yet, but I'm going to call it District 11, will also be for staff. So, really, if there was a way to add staff to deal with what's going on, being built down there off the baseline in the south of Pleasant Grove, be our prior next staffing.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Albert?
I've got a follow-on question now that we're on it. So, the county's building some massive communities to our north and south, out on the west side, central areas. I'm curious, is this a concern for our Fire Department because we do have mutual aid to respond? And right now, they're with Cal Fire, and the response time's very different than our response time. I'm just able to talk about what, how that will affect us, if it will?
Well, there's two concurrent LAFCO studies going on right now. One that's just on fire service in Placerville County, and then, there's one for the city itself. And with those two coming together, I think we'll have a better idea of what the plan is for Placerville County Fire, I should say, for them to, how soon they will be staffing for the vineyards and so forth going on to the west. And I anticipate, hopefully, that our city manager and I will probably have some two-by-twos with the county and have some kind of discussions about what does mutual aid, what it look like, and how, what's the expense burden come on to us, or how's that get shared?
Councilman Albert, if I just jump onto that quickly, we had conversations early with Placerville County on this, particularly for Placerville 1 and Regional University, which are two of the three developments, or left, the other one is Vineyards, which was on the books a long time ago. But for Regional and Placerville 1, they're in the development agreements, their staffing levels need to be similar to the city's staffing levels. And if they're not, they're going to, they're going to help pay, what is it called, a fair share of those additional costs. But to Chief's point, he's right, a lot of those details need to be worked out. But I did want to share that it is in the agreements. It's a conversation we've been having, and I wouldn't say a concern, but we're aware.
Appreciate you guys being on that because I know for a while, Lincoln was suffering so bad that we were sometimes their main response until they found we were able to catch up. So, I just thank you for being ahead of it so we don't run into a problem for our own residents.
I'll just say, based on the number and the quality of the questions, you can see that both police and fire, public safety is a high priority for this council. The first responder fee, evidently, things are calming down because I don't get three emails a day about it. Does that fully fund what Vice Mayor Bernice Coney was talking about as our advanced life support, or is there a gap in that funding?
Well, there's definitely a gap in that funding. As you saw in our slide in our budget anyway, it's personnel, and so, the cost is really in personnel as far as to provide that service. But I don't know if it ever will fund it. That wasn't meant to fund, fully fund ALS or life, paramedic services. It's just there, the augment, some of the increases that we have in the service we provide and the equipment we provide and the drugs or the, I should say, the medications that we have to provide, so just assist us with that. And Dennis could probably talk to that a little bit better than I can. But it's calmed down mostly because of education. You know, we continue to educate the public of what it's for and why we do what we do. And then, we also have a staff that this first responder fee has been able to fund for us that directly talks to that when it needs to and takes those questions.
Helps them then go to their insurance company or wait or not pay until their insurance company.
We'll grab them by the hand and walk them through there as much as we can, anytime we have, and then, of course, forgive the fee when it's appropriate.
And I think, you know, there's cost, and then, there's value, and it's got to be more of a value than it is a cost to have folks show up and provide aid and comfort to that, so.
No doubt.
I'll open it for public comment. I'll close public comment unless the council has other questions. We'll let the chief go, and we'll hear from Parks, Recreation, and Library.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Jill Geller, your Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Director. With me tonight is our Park Planning and Development Manager, Tara G., because I know oftentimes, your questions revolve around park development. And I want to take a moment to thank Dennis and his team as well for all their good work. And I have to acknowledge my team as well. This is not a one-person job, and I know they're not going to want to stand up. But I've got some Parks, Recreation, and Library staff over there. But I've got some Parks, Recreation, Library staff over there if you want to just give us a wave. There they are. So if we could get the presentation up there, and I'm ready for the next slide. Thank you very much. So as you're aware, the Parks, Recreation and Libraries Department oversees all of the city's parks and open spaces, recreation programs and facilities, libraries and museum. And this slide shows how we divide this work among the five divisions in our department. We manage 87 developed parks with six more currently under construction. We maintain over 4,000 acres of open space, more than 300 acres of streetscapes, 43 acres of school properties and 40-plus miles of multi-use trails. We also manage and maintain more than 30 facilities. And this includes our three libraries, three swimming pools, two golf courses, the Mahaney Fitness Center and Midu Community Center, the Midu Museum and Historic Site and 21 Adventure Club sites. So Parks, Recreation and Libraries' proposed total operating budget for FY25 is $52 million. This consists of the numerous areas and operations that you see on this chart, with the largest percentage being the maintenance of our parks and open spaces at 36%. Not all of PRL's operating budget comes from the general fund. You can see that the Youth Development Fund and Golf Fund are also included in the Parks, Recreation and Libraries budget. So PRL's total general fund operating budget is 38.6 million, which as you heard earlier is 17% of the city's overall general fund operating budget. And because of our successful programming in the areas of recreation and our adventure clubs, 29% of our expenditures are offset by revenues. To share some of our budget highlights for FY25, I'll start with our new position recommendations. First on the list is the sports supervisor. The sports supervisor will oversee the operations of the new soccer complex as well as our other sports complexes and programs. We intend to hire this position January 1st so that he or she can begin scheduling users at the complex as well as recruiting tournaments and we can hit the ground running when the complex opens in late 2025. This supervisor will also be involved in the final stages of construction, so they will understand the ins and outs of the facility. In this first year, the position will be funded by the general fund, but in future years, as business at the soccer complex increases, we expect this position to be fully funded by complex revenues. Next on the list, you'll see we've requested five parks maintenance workers. The funding for these positions is offset by contract savings as we reduce our maintenance contract and take over landscape maintenance at Mahaney and Midu Parks, as well as all maintenance at 22 of our larger parks that have sports fields, restrooms, sport courts, parking and other amenities that draw community-wide use. The 22 parks I'm referring to had nearly 1 million visitors in 2023. They're highly visit, highly visible to our residents and our users and we'd like to have better eyes on them as well. So again, these parks maintenance workers will be assuming work that had previously been, been done by our contractors, so there's no added cost to the general fund for these positions. New equipment and supplies are needed to assume this workload, but even with that expense, we see a long-term savings by bringing this work in-house. We currently, back one slide still, we currently have a .75 graphic designer position. We desire to make this employee full-time. With more parks and programs each year, this position enhances our communication with residents and directly impacts our ability to generate revenue. And lastly, we've requested to convert an aquatics maintenance technician from limited term to regular. We currently have one full-time regular aquatics maintenance tech who's responsible for the maintenance and operation of all of our pools and splash pads. Some of the pools operate year-round, require coverage from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. seven days a week. So to ensure their safe operation, to meet state and county regulations, to troubleshoot issues and just to perform routine maintenance, the second technician is very much needed on a long-term basis. So other additions to our budget directly align with council priorities. So we've categorized them this way. To ensure a safe and healthy community, we're requesting general fund support for our subsidized adventure club programs that serve lower-income families, as well as support to maintain the city-owned buildings in which our adventure clubs are housed. The June 5th council agenda will include a discussion in more detail, updating council about the Youth Development Fund and recommended general fund support. We serve approximately 1,400 children each week in our adventure clubs and preschools and we understand their importance to these kids, their families and our entire community. We're proud to provide a service that allows parents to work, keeps our kids safe and is building Roseville's future leaders. The next item, to continue our delivery of exceptional services, we're requesting funding for additional, additional temporary staff at our libraries. Our libraries are busy. Circulations have increased an average of 16% over the past two years, with an expected circulation exceeding 1.5 million items this year. And library visitations have increased by an, by an average of 29% over the past two years, with expected visitation of nearly a half million this year. Our current library staff are struggling to keep up with the volume and these additional temporary employee hours will allow us to continue effectively serving our residents. We can better support community engagement with our new Active Net Captivate application. This platform will bring our recreation management software to our customers' mobile devices where they can easily find, download and connect with our programs and services. Some of the features include membership check-in, replacing the need for physical membership cards, calendar views to see current course registration and facility availability, and a communication portal for class reminders, cancellations and new offerings. We'll continue to invest in well-planned infrastructure and growth through the maintenance of our upcoming improvements to the Rocky Ridge and Kirby Streetscapes and the Sunrise Greenway. We also have new parks and landscape areas to maintain, which includes Campus Oaks Park, the Pistachio Park Ballfields, Fire Station Number Eight landscaping and landscaping at the All-American City Roundabout. We'll begin a three-year upgrade to our irrigation controllers to the new cellular format, replacing our outdated radio communication controllers, which the industry is phasing out. And we're implementing a four-year bark replacement program to ensure that our general fund landscape areas are consistently well-maintained. And to ensure fiscal responsibility, we will be completing the biennial study of our fee schedule for park maintenance. A study establishing fee schedule for neighborhood parks, open spaces and streetscape maintenance was first conducted and approved by council in FY19. Since this initial approval, the schedule's been updated every other year, so this study is due again in FY25. In conclusion, I'd like to share these Parks, Recreation and Libraries statistics from calendar year 2023 as a snapshot of the impact we have on our community. In 2023, PRL had 1.1 million visitations at our recreation facilities and libraries. We had more than 600,000 program and event participations. Over 100,000 rounds of golf were played at Wood Creek and Diamond Oaks. We enlisted 8,219 volunteer hours, which equates to a value of more than $300,000. And the big number, no surprise, is the number of people who visit our parks. Our parks hosted 3.4 million park visitations in 2023. So as you know, PRL's mission is to enhance lives and the community by providing exceptional experiences. We get the opportunity to do so millions of times each year. So your continued support of our efforts makes all of this possible. I'll close by saying thank you very much for your leadership and your continued support and we're happy to stand for any questions you have.
Questions?
On the GIS fund they were talking about earlier, there's some GIS and they talked about it being for PRL. Could you talk about what that'll be used for?
Yes, we share a GIS position that is housed in the IT department. So we utilize GIS for a lot of our work in Parks and Rec to do mapping. And so we partner with IT for that person to provide those services to our department.
We'd love it on the trails. The other comment I want to make and again, I know we're in growing pains and things. I live out on the west side of town and our tweens and teens have, other than just our parks, there's very little amenities for them. And so we've been having issues with them hanging out at our few little retail areas out there. And we're really looking forward to some, some bigger activities and attractions for the teens to keep them busy during the summer times and give our police a break and.
We look forward to providing those as well. And we do have a new camp that's starting out in the western part of Roseville this summer. So we're working hard to provide more activities out there as well.
But that's awesome. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bernascony?
Not a question, but a comment. I will say that I've noticed since 2020, the creativity of your department has exploded. And I think I first noticed it when you, you know, families were struggling during the pandemic, everything was closed and you were doing curbside crafts and puzzles and really thinking outside of the box. And now we have things like the trail ambassadors, park ambassador, even I saw something around like Nerf gun fun. So I just want to congratulate you and commend your staff on really meeting the needs of the community, especially as your department is stretched and you're, we're opening parks all of the time. Our population is growing. You guys are doing a knockout job. And I think our community, I hear from community members all the time that wait till they get their pamphlet in the mail that, you know, all of the classes. And I know our families, particularly our young families, really depend on all the recreational opportunities that your staff provide. So really good job.
Thank you for that. And I will agree with you that our staff's creativity is off the charts. So thank you for acknowledging that.
Councilwoman Ricucci? Questions?
No, I agree with Councilmember Bernascony. The new ideas that we have are really great. The only question I have, and I just thought, because it's just sounded, sounded exciting, was the graphic designer. I know you had said you had six more parks to do. How do you see that graphic designer work with some of the, our older parks, maybe our new sports center, soccer stadium? How do you see that?
Well, so it is a current position that we have that is just .75. And so we're wanting to make that full-time because we have so much work to do. But this employee designs all of our brochures, our flyers, things that help us promote everything that's going on in the city.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Mandanza?
No, nothing hasn't already been asked. Thank you.
So I'm just curious about your, you mentioned general fund augmentation of youth development. So if I remember correctly, some of the funds from the mayor's cup and other items go toward that program or do they go to other programs?
Other programs. They go to things like our Operation Swim, our scholarship program. We have not allocated those particular funds to the youth development program.
Okay. You know, we're, we're in a way a victim of our own success and our spectacular parks. Have you looked at other, other ways to generate revenue out of our oversubscribed regional parks?
We're always looking at ways to generate additional revenue, you know, through leagues and programs and.
Okay. Can we, can we, you know, I know in our Tinfield Sports Complex, there'll be some revenue from those parking spaces. Has, have you explored that in other places? Harry Crab Park? Sorry, did I say that? Or Central Park? Yeah, because especially, you know, with our parks that we border other jurisdictions are quite popular and if somehow we, you know, without generating spillover into the neighborhoods, we were somehow able to monetize the popularity of those parks, I'd sure be supportive of that or using some mobile park app to let people know, go to a different park. This one's, this one's full.
We will look into that, absolutely.
Great. All right. I'll open it up for public comment, close public comment and ask council if the council doesn't have. When, one more question. Is it August or September when you will know that you have won this year?
October.
October. That's great. Vice Mayor Bernascony and I have birthdays that month. We won't say what day or what, you know, what year, but we will look forward to celebrating.
We'll do our best to give you a great birthday gift.
Yes, we would like gold, please.
Except we'll have a presentation from our Development Services Director, Mike Eisen.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Mike Eisen, your Development Services Director. I'm pleased to present a broad overview of the Development Services Department's budget for fiscal year '25 and tell you a little bit more about what we do. Development Services is comprised really of four functional divisions. We have 79 full-time employees and three part-time employees currently. That fluctuates from year to year, anywhere between 80 to 85 total headcount, depending on workload. Our Building Permit Center and Code Enforcement Division is responsible for building plan review and inspection. They manage the Permit Center, which is the city's one-stop shop for development permits. And as you know, Code Enforcement is responsible for nuisance and blight abatement, sign enforcement, graffiti abatement and most recently illegal fireworks. The Business and Administrative Services Unit provides organizational, technological and administrative support to all of the internal divisions within Development Services. They manage our citywide permitting system, which is Acela Automation. They manage all of our development-related records and data. They manage citywide addressing on behalf of utility billing, the 911 system and all of that. They manage the base map data in GIS. And most importantly, they manage all of our project building billings, which brings in about $4 million a year in secondary costs or secondary labor cost recovery. Engineering Land Development reviews infrastructure improvement plans. They inspect all of the top site and underground improvements as they're going in. So in all the new growth areas, they're, they're inspecting all of that infrastructure. They maintain the citywide traffic models and they manage the traffic mitigation fee programs that total over a half a billion dollars. They also provide staff support to the South Placer Regional Transportation Authority. And then last but not least, the Planning Division oversees the city's land use planning and general plan, the zoning ordinance. They process development entitlements. They participate in regional planning efforts with SACOG and other regional partners. Planning also provides environmental coordination, and this is new within the last couple of years, to all city departments, including the utilities and capital improvement projects. This includes preparation of applicable environmental documents and coordination with state and federal agencies, including the procurement of state and federal resource permits. So as you can imagine, this is very important work to ensure the city stays in the good graces of the various resource agencies and environmental groups. Just a broad overview of our, our budget, our net operating budget is roughly 13.9 million. It's broken down into the categories on the screen. Building inspection is the bulk of the expenses. They are the largest unit in the department. But that also includes our contract services for third-party plan review, which is why they're, they're up there as, as far as percentage goes. Followed by business services, which again, they're providing the technological support. So they do have some contract services and, and materials and supplies and things like that. Contra, or similar to what Troy said, administration, it's just me and an administrative assistant. So there are a bunch of miscellaneous expenses that are lumped into that administration bunch. So we don't have a bunch of us running around telling people what to do. I'm, I do enough of that. So between the reimbursements for full-cost projects and permit fees, we expect to take in just over $10 million next year in various forms of cost recovery. So the overall net resulting impact of the general fund is budgeted at 6.7 million or about 5.8% of the total general fund operating budget. And as in years past, we expect to do better. In fact, this year through April, we're trending at about 70% cost recovery, which is pretty typical for us. So we're aiming to, to get that through year's end. So the general fund cost is reflected in services that you generally can't or shouldn't recover costs from, such as code enforcement, neighborhood outreach, regional coordination and general inquiries at the Permit Center counter. Really want to charge people to ask you questions. Those are more general government functions that we just provide. I hate following public safety in parks because quite frankly, our budget is really boring in comparison, but there are three things I wanted to emphasize this year. The first is, is as with most departments, our expenses are going to increase. They're going to increase from $12.6 million last year to 13.9 this year. That's mostly due to influences beyond our control, including increases to internal services funds, negotiated salary wages and benefits, that's a citywide cost, and then workers' compensation increases. We'll also see an increase in our tech fund expenses, but those are offset entirely by permit fee revenue. So that, that doesn't, that's cost neutral. The second is, is we're requesting two new positions this year. We, we don't often ask for positions and when we do, it's, it's because we really need them. We're asking for a senior plans examiner and a plans examiner one, two. And this is with the goal of bringing as much plan review back in-house as possible. As you know, we contract out a significant. As you know, we contract out a significant amount of plan review to third-party plan reviewers, to the tune of a million and a half to $2 million a year in third-party contracted plan review. As you know, this is a significant pain point for us and our customers. We get a lot of complaints with this process because we hire the contractors to evaluate plans to the letter of the law. There's little discretion on their part as, you know, to code interpretations. If we bring more of that back in-house, we have more of that discretion, and we think we can reduce complaints commensurately. So that's something we're looking to do next year. We have factored these new positions into our permit fees. The, the fee schedule update in early May, as Dennis and Scott had, had discussed. But as part of our continual efforts to put resources where they're needed most, we are proposing to eliminate a vacant planner position. And we've been holding that vacant for about two years. And as we sit right now, we think we can manage with the staff we have in the planning unit. So we'll eliminate that vacant position to help offset that cost even more. But it will also be offset further by a reduction in the amount we're paying those third-party plan reviewers. So we're just keeping that work internally, and we're not paying anybody else to do it. And then the third point I wanted to make is that you recall, again, with the using regulatory fee schedule, Terry Mattson was here to present that on May 1. And we have changed the methodology with which we calculate our, our building permit, plan, review, and inspection fees. We've been using a static valuation building or construction valuation table since 2013. It hasn't been adjusted for inflation, so it's hopelessly obsolete. With this update, we've changed to reflect the current building valuation table as published by the International Code Council. They actually publish it twice a year. We're only using once a year as our, our baseline. But these ICC valuation tables reflect current construction prices as they fluctuate from year to year. And just to make you aware, construction valuations have more than tripled since 2013. So suffice to say, we've been significantly underreporting construction valuations. And we can't actually charge more, you know, than it costs us to provide service. But the net effect of the change is that we'll more accurately report the construction values, which among other things is a measure of investment in the community and also a measure of assessed value in the community. So it just kind of helps us keep a finger on the pulse there. And, and so that's, that's really the biggest change. Next year, we're going to be implementing that. That'll be a, a change for our staff. And it resulted in, on the residential side, a negligible increase in permit fees. And then on the commercial, anywhere between 5 to 10%, just again, to reflect the cost of service that we're providing. So that's, that's really it for Development Services. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
All right. Questions? You're foundational to the city. You're not boring. You're foundation.
I just had a question. Give me examples of neighborhood outreach. Is it somebody called in and you go check? Or what does that mean?
We're often asked to go to various Arcona meetings to present on various topics that aren't a development project-related thing. So if, if it's a development project, we'll charge for our time if we go to those meetings. But if it's not, if it's just a general, provide us an overview of how the general plan works or, or whatever, we'll go to those neighborhood meetings. They often occur at night, and I have to pay staff overtime to be there. So it's those types of things that, that I'm referring to that aren't cost-recoverable.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
Well, I'd just say that I think that your department runs on two premises, is that for the applicants, time is money. And the other thing is they want transparency and consistency. You know, they want to know that they can go, whether to you or one of your colleagues, and they're going to get the same answer every time and not kind of the runaround. And I think from our time on the planning commission, and when we hear projects here at the city council, that's one thing that your department's really good at. And there, you're always committed on that.
Thank you.
Developers are always praising your team about how, how much easier it is to work in Roseville and how they're very knowledgeable and it doesn't take forever to get stuff back. I know we get complaints once in a while, but generally, Roseville has a very positive view in the region.
Any questions for him, though? I do have a question. So, and this is, and maybe this is really more for the city manager, because I think it's an overarching thing within the city. And that's that institutional memory and that talent, right? We're going to have some folks within your department that are, that know a lot about how this city was built. And capturing those is going to be really important. So are you working on, are you working on a program for that right now?
Yeah, but this isn't a new phenomenon. We had a huge wave about six years ago when I took over as director. And within my first two years as being director, I filled 35 positions in a department of 80.
Right.
So this is not new to us. We've developed strong written procedures. We're, we're very keen on the knowledge transfer, making sure that, you know, we're taking appropriate levels of staff to every meeting, just, just to gain exposure to the way things work. We do have a pretty robust succession training program. We have a robust training line item in our budget. So it is top of mind for me especially. I'm going to lose probably all four of my division managers within the next two years, which is, keeps me up at night. But that's something that we're working on to make sure that we've got the next generation teed up and ready, ready to take over.
Dom, did you want to add anything to that?
No, actually, I mean, that really, that really was well said in the succession planning piece. But it's something we, we are doing citywide. If you notice in the budgets, some of the one-time funding is spent on a citywide strategy to help with some of this knowledge transfer and talent management, really, to ensure that, that we are ready. And, and also to, to Mike Eisen's point, it is not new to us. You know, the team I hired into 14 years ago, there's one person left that's still on that team. And so we're used to change. We're able to deal with it. And but also, one of the things is accreditation. You're going to see in some of the departments moving forward in the budget, because, you know, not accreditation just for necessarily accreditation's sake, but it puts in the policy and practice in writing, so you have that knowledge transfer.
Great. Open up for public comment. Close public comment. And unless there's anything else. Thank you, Mike, for your presentation. Oh, there he is. I was looking for Jason. Our next presentation will be from our Public Works Director, Jason Shikowski.
Good evening, Mayor Haldes. Shelton members of the council. My name is Jason Shikowski, and I'm your Public Works Director. It's my pleasure to present to you tonight a brief overview of the fiscal year '25 Public Works operating budget. First, to set some context for the Public Works budget, I think an overview of the breadth of the divisions and services provided by Public Works would be helpful. Public Works is divided into six divisions responsible for a wide range of services. Public Works Administration provides review, oversight, direction, and coordination for the department. Engineering oversees the design and construction of roads, bridges, bike trails, traffic signals, and road resurfacing. They protect our community through management of the city's floodplain and early warning flood alert system. They manage traffic operations throughout the city using their varied intelligent transportation system tools. They review requests for crosswalks, stop signs, permit parking through their traffic study program, and they maintain the city's traffic signals, ITS, and underground fiber network. The Street Maintenance Division maintains the city roads and drainage system, seals the cracks in our roads, and removes and repaves portions of failing streets. They fill the potholes, sweep the city streets, install and replace traffic signs and pavement markings, complete traffic study improvements like adding crosswalks and stop signs, conduct planned community events and emergency traffic control, remove graffiti and pick up garbage dumped in our streets, and clear our streets of leaves every fall. The Alternative Transportation Division owns and manages the city's bus system. They run the South Placer Transit Information Center, where riders can make arrow-on-demand reservations and get help with planning their transit trips throughout most of Placer County. They provide oversight and planning for bike and pedestrian facilities. They implement the city's transportation system management ordinance, working to reduce single occupancy vehicle travel on our roads through encouraging biking, ride-sharing, using the bus and rail, and telecommuting at the city's larger places of employment. They work with our schools to encourage walking and biking to class through creating and identifying safe routes for children to get to school. And they oversee the training and locations of the city's crossing guards. The Fleet Services Division purchases, manages, and maintains the city's 900-plus vehicle fleet, which includes everything from motorcycles and police cars to buses and garbage trucks. And the Facility Services Division maintains and cleans all city-owned buildings and structures, from fire stations to our parking garages. They manage the planning and design and construction of city buildings. And they also oversee facility improvements ranging from painting to remodels. The Public Works operating budget for fiscal year '25 is $60 million. As you can see, the largest piece of the pie is Fleet Services. Fleet Services is funded through an Internal Service Fund, or ISF, where other city departments and Public Works divisions pay for what they use, including fuel, vehicle maintenance, and the largest portion of the fleet budget, the end-of-life vehicle replacement. Alternative transportation and street maintenance tie with the second-largest budgets. Much of the alternative transportation pie slice belongs to transit-related costs. But the entire pie slice is funded with state sales and gas taxes. They do not use any general funds. The Street Maintenance, on the other hand, has the largest general fund cost for Public Works. However, their slice of the pie is also offset with non-general fund sources like utility impact reimbursements from environmental utilities for their impact on our roadways, roadway safety funds, and some gas tax for roadway maintenance. Next is Facility Maintenance. Facilities is also an ISF-funded division, similar to Fleet. Engineering uses a mix of general fund, CIP, secondary labor, and Roseville Electric funding for signal maintenance. And finally, administration's a small five-person team with a budget that barely shows up on the graph and is made up of funding from all of the previous sources. Of note is that out of the $60 million Public Works operating budget, only $1.5 million is from the general fund, which is 5% of the city's total general fund operating budget for fiscal year '25. So some of the primary drivers for the Public Works budget changes in fiscal year '25 are growth and council priorities. Growth of the city leads to an increase in the number of assets to maintain and the numbers, number of calls for service. And sometimes, in order to continue to meet the priorities of the council, a small increase in resources is needed. Quickly going through the list of Public Works budget increases requested for the next fiscal year, we have the reclassifying of the Engineering Division Manager to an Assistant Director position, currently under study by the Human Resources Department. And that position will not only help with managing Public Works as it continues to grow, but help to increase the responsiveness of the department and help prepare Public Works for the future. We talked about succession planning earlier and passing on information from one generation to the next. Backfilling the previous Engineering Division Manager, we will be using a lower-cost principal engineer position because we still need someone to manage the engineering group in order to allow the Assistant Director to do Assistant Director-type work. We will be adding an engineering technician to provide active monitoring and management of the city's transportation network through monitoring, sending alerts, and modifying signal timing in response to planned, unplanned interruptions in our streets. They can also respond to planned interruptions as well. Adding an Equipment Service worker to help maintain our increasing fleet of vehicles. Adding a custodian to keep the city's slowly-expanding square footage of facilities clean and safe. Converting a part-time temporary street maintenance worker position into a part-time temporary office assistant, because we need more help tracking the increasing number of work orders, contracts, and billings as the city continues to expand. Funding a new, funding new state-mandated training for staff driving large vehicles. There's some additional money being requested there. We also requested some funding for adding speed bumps to our two parking garages to deter racing through those garages and other high-speed activities. That's a one-time cost. And we are also asking for more funding for overtime due to the increasing staff callouts and emergency work as the city continues to grow. In total, the fiscal year '25 budget increase request for Public Works is $895,000, with $643,000 of that being general fund. This equates to a 1.5% increase in total funding for fiscal year '25. As I said, this would be brief. So that concludes my brief presentation. And myself and some of my division managers are here to answer any questions.
Any questions? Nope. Nope. I think you had us on May 1 when you gave us the CIP update. So I'll open it up for public comment. Close public comment. Unless there's anything for Jason and his staff, we'll have Melissa Angiano come up and give us a presentation on economic development. No, I didn't get the right pronunciation there.
Good evening, Mayor Haldes. Members of the city council, Melissa Angiano, your city's Economic Development Director. And I am pleased to close out the series of department presentations this evening. Next slide, please. The Economic Development Department is comprised of two divisions, Economic Development and Housing, which includes our Federal Housing Authority. The primary role of our department is to foster a dynamic environment that supports business growth, attracts private investment, and delivers housing options in ways that enhance community vitality. The Economic Development Division focuses on strengthening Roseville's position as a community of choice for business, investment, and lifestyle by retaining and attracting and growing businesses, encouraging job growth, and investing in the city's value propositions by leveraging local and regional partnerships and building on our competitive advantages. The division also staffs and provides support for the city's Economic Development Advisory Committee. The Housing Division manages programs under our Housing Choice Voucher Rental Assistance Program, our Community Development Block Grant Program, Affordable Purchase Program, and Owner Occupied Rehab Program. All of these programs strive to increase the city's affordable housing availability. In addition, this division provides staffing and support for the Roseville Housing Authority, as mentioned, the Homeless Response Team, the Successor Agency, and the Housing Successor Agency. Our Economic Development Department budget is comprised of a whopping $4.6 million, of which 1 million, a little over 1 million of that is general fund. It makes up less than 1% of the general fund operating budget, and just under 2% of general fund expenditures are covered by revenue offsets. This does include, as you can see on the pie chart, a, a large component of our housing state and state programs, which is the CDBG program, our home funds, our Cal Home Funds, our Federal stimulus reserve ARPA funds, our Housing Trust, and then our Housing Citizen Benefit Fund. What's not included in this chart and is called out in the box on the chart is our Housing Authority budget, which is $11.1 million. And I will cover that over the next slide. As mentioned, the Housing Authority budget represents a significant amount of work that our Housing Division undertakes. And as noted on the slide, previous slide, it almost doubles our operating budget. This this year's budget is up over 2 million from last year's 9.1 million budget. And it covers all of, and funds all of our programs under our Housing Choice Voucher Program. That's our homelessness vouchers, our Veteran Affairs Supportive Housing, VASH vouchers, our mainstream vouchers, and our emergency housing vouchers. While we typically don't have much to include on our budget highlights slide, this year we do have two small requests. One is a request of a new Economic Development Manager position as an outcome of a classification study. This new position will manage highly complex business development retention projects and strategies as outlined in our Economic Development Strategy. This position also will support and enhance succession planning efforts and employee retention within the department. The new position will be filled with the promotional recruitment process with the resulting vacancy of an Economic Development Project Manager position. And once that position is filled, the project manager position will be eliminated. It is an increase of just about $18,000 for that new position. As noted, our, our Housing Authority does a significant amount of work under our Housing Choice Voucher Program. They currently, that program does require them to perform inspections, meetings, and trainings. They currently have a 2011 Toyota Prius and are in need of a replacement. So we are requesting a replacement for that.
They made them in 2011?
That replacement cost is about $35,000, we're estimating. And so while we have minimal changes to our operating budget this year, we did just want to highlight a few significant revenue and funding impacts and efforts that we will continue to work on that support council's goals and also align with our city's strategic plan. A lot of, of what I will note here will overlap with the city manager's budget message and some of the, some of the comments that both Scott and Dennis made. But we will continue to focus on how we support sports tourism, including the opening of the new soccer complex, by looking at how we continue to create hospitality, retail, restaurant, entertainment, and amenity opportunities throughout the city. We have a team that just returned from the International Council of Shopping Centers Conference, where there was a lot of interest in our retail and hospitality market here in Roseville. in Roseville. We have five hotels underway or am just recently approved. So we do expect to see a lot of support and activity in that area. We continue to look at how we foster business climates that support small businesses and entrepreneurship through emerging technologies and industries. We will continue to do that work through the Roseville Venture Lab, a demonstration policy that we anticipate bringing back to council for consideration soon, as well as the use of a small business portal through our website redesign. We've talked a lot about aligning with key industry growth around regional interest and how we can leverage the opportunities created by Bosch and the supply chain. We are going to continue to focus on efforts to facilitate those opportunities, including how we increase site and land development that will help foster that activity. And then accentuating arts and culture and creating senses of places. The recent economic impact report done by the Placer County Arts Council demonstrated the importance of that industry, and we'll continue to focus on how we support those efforts and create opportunities throughout the downtown and city. Ensuring a safe and healthy community, our Housing Division is a powerhouse in our department. They continue to look at creative ways on how to support and fund affordable housing, including the securing of over $4 million in local housing trust fund money. We are pending approval for additional pro-housing incentive program funding and getting that money out. We continue to strive for 100% utilization under the HCV program. And then leveraging all of our resources on homeless prevention and rapid rehousing funds is always a priority. Investing in well-planned infrastructure and growth. Dom mentioned the commercial corridors. We are completing some analysis and research work with Development Services on the commercial corridors. And we anticipate we'll be coming back to council with some additional program and servicing on how we can implement those specific plans and continue to drive investment along those areas. And I will close by saying while our budget is small and mighty, it's really because of the work of economic development is done and shared throughout the entire city. Every department you heard from tonight and in the previous budget workshops has a role in playing and doing economic development, and we certainly appreciate everyone's partnership and leadership on that front. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Questions?
No.
Questions?
Great job.
I have a comment, but I'll save it. Open it up for public comment. I'll close public comment. I'll just say, you know, on our recent federal advocacy trip, we had, one of the, right out of the box, I mean, we thought, we thought, oh my God, where do we go from here? But we had a meeting with Veterans Administration. And our housing manager was talking about how she had sent some employees to a bootcamp in Los Angeles. The person who was the public information officer on the screen, found that person, I still don't know where that person was, brought that person into the meeting. That person was presenting at a conference. And she wasn't prepared, but she went on for five minutes. And as a result of that, no doubt, we will, we'll have some positive connections. And of course, we mentioned while we were there that Marine Sergeant Nicole G. was from our area, and we made a real connection with the Veterans Administration while we were there. So I just wanted to underscore that. And unless there's any other questions or comments. Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Albert.
I just want to make the comment that I very much appreciate the Economic Development Department, because being very proactive and purposeful in looking forward and trying to draw in those future fundings for our city, that provides the quality of life that our residents are, that's why they moved here, and we need to maintain that as we get older. And I know that's a big key element. We really appreciate the work that your department does in ensuring our quality of life down the road. So thank you for doing that.
Unless there's other comments, I think we'll, thank you. Appreciate it very much. Mr. Casey, will you provide us some closing remarks?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mayor. Wow, that was a lot. You know, I always love this time of year, because it really puts our folks on display. We have a lot of passionate, caring professionals that really look at this as more of a calling than a job. And so I just want to thank you. I want to thank each of you for the work that you do. You make a difference. I think in our budget, and it reflects this, that our role is to make lives better in the city of Roseville, and this budget certainly does that. Working with the direction from the council and our strategic plan and our priorities, aligning with that. I often, I often say, we run fast, we run lean, but we have fun. And we certainly do. And I think that was a great demonstration of that. But I also don't take for light the council's trust in us, the community's trust in us. And I know that we covered a lot of ground tonight, but again, I mentioned in the beginning and the opening, it's an extensive process. It's a long process, and we share it throughout the year, so it is consumable. And we do understand. And I appreciate your questions tonight. I appreciate you, your care about public safety, and it came through clear tonight, that not only is that a priority in the council goals document, it's, you live it. You say it. And that helps us. It helps us as staff. It helps me as your manager to make sure that I continue prioritizing that very thing. And so I want to thank the staff tonight. I want to thank Scott and Dennis and his team, for sure. Lisa Giss left, and I was going to call her out for her last budget meeting, since she'll be retiring, which is one of those that we talked about, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't see that in the presentation.
No, no, I'm off-script, Mayor.
Okay. Don't we have to approve?
Yes. I wish I could approve those. And so, but no, all seriousness, I really appreciate your time and your concern and your care. It makes us better, it makes our community better. And so I thank you for that. I'm happy to answer any final questions you might have or turn it over to you for your final comments. Oh, no, we will be back June 19th for the budget adoption.
Any final questions or comments of our city manager? I do have one comment. You meant, we were talking about institutional, you know, institutional knowledge and succession planning. And I meant to say this when Melissa was up here, but she's an example, as is our city clerk, of the success of that succession planning that we've had over the past five years or so. So, and there's others out there. So I just meant to mention that while Melissa was there. If that is it, I will ask if the city attorney has any comments.
I don't, just one more public comment period.
Would you like one more public comment period?
The law would like that.
The law would like. I'll open it up for public comment on, public comment, I will bring it back to the council. City manager, I assume you've said everything you wanted to say?
Further reports, Mayor.
No further reports? So I'll ask the council members if they have any reports or comments they want to make. All right, I will do two things. One, we saw on display here, and the city manager mentioned it, you know, the incredible staff we have. We saw the management team here last week. Some of you, I wasn't able to make it, went to the Pride of Roseville recognition, where colleagues recognized and managers recognized their exemplary employees and a lot of, seen a lot of social media posts. That's one level of recognition of our exemplary staff. There's another one, and that's when outside organizations recognize one of our staff. And recently, the California Public Information Officers gave Maurice Chaney, recognized Maurice Chaney with the Paul B. Clark, as a Paul B. Clark recipient. So that's high honor, and that reflects, reflects well on our city. On a more somber note, this morning, very early this morning, some of us that are very, someone very near and dear to our community, Aldo Paneshi, lost his battle with cancer. We all, the wound is fresh, not just on all of us who knew him in various capacities and knew, but his family. And so as we close this evening, we're going to close in memory of Aldo and give his family the opportunity to, to, you know, just give his family the opportunity to have space. But it was heartbreaking, devastating, and I think we're still all trying to cope with it. So we will adjourn in memory of Aldo Paneshi.